At this time, I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Education Regular Board Meeting for Tuesday, September 10th, 2019 to order. At this time, I would like to offer a moment of silence. In doing so, please remember our first responders, military and police, especially those on our September 11th, 18 years ago. At this time, if you please stand and join in Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're moving to our public comments section of our meeting. And first up, Ms. Lexi Ann Brown. If you have come forward, state your name, your address, and proceed with your public comments.
I'm Lexi Ann Brown. And my home address?
That's fine.
Okay. 1312 Gormley Circle, Sanford, North Carolina. I am the dance teacher at WB Wicker Elementary School. And I just wanted to thank everyone for all of the planning and effort that went into bringing our incredible new school to life. The facility is a teacher's dream, and the children who are lucky enough to walk the halls and learn in the classrooms at WB Wicker are gaining a unique and valuable educational experience. As someone who has lived in Sanford my entire life and is a graduate of the Lee County School System, I love giving back to the community that gave me so much. I'm proud to be teaching at a school that I truly believe will change the lives of children in Lee County for the better and will open a door to educational opportunities they might otherwise never experience. None of this would have been possible without the support of so many people in our community. So on behalf of the faculty, staff, and especially the students who have so much to gain, thank you again to each and every person who stepped up and helped make this dream a reality. Your hard work and dedication have not gone unnoticed and is greatly appreciated.
All right. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Sandy Shover.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Shover. I live at 2730 Waters Edge Drive. Excuse me. Okay. All right. I wanted to formally introduce myself. I'm the new president of the Lee County Association of Educators. I just wanted to give you guys a couple of updates on some things that we are doing that we want to continue in partnership with this board to make Lee County Scholars the awesome program that it is. We've taken the inventory of everything that we still have in the prize stuff to try to be better storers of those materials and have that already ready for long-range planning for this year. We also have decided to try to help encourage students to go for Lee County Scholars and to go for high achievement to help all of the middle schools start up National Junior Honor Society. One of the biggest obstacles to that is cost, so we have offered every school from our organization to pay for the $385 startup costs. So far Wesley has taken advantage. We're still talking to the other schools. I know it's very early and getting sponsors onboard and being ready to do that takes a little bit of time, so we're hoping to help with student achievement that way. We also want to offer leadership that we can, from a staff point of view, of what can we do to make conditions better for staff because obviously the conditions we work in are those conditions students learn in. To that end, we're going to try to conduct a local survey, and when we do that, we're going to share the data, share the results, so that we can be partners in this. And we also want to propose an idea to keep teachers in Lee County by considering a slight bonus on the district supplement. Like, once you've been in the district five years, the idea would be if there was a small amount extra you would get, and maybe increase it every five years, even if it was as small as say, an extra .5 percent. We lose a lot of teachers to Wake and other surrounding counties. We want them here. We want them to stay with us and build that community and continue to build up things at our schools. So, and just in closing, I'd like to say, if any of you would like to come and meet with us, we would welcome that. We would invite you anytime. And you can reach us anytime. You can contact me. And we also have an email. It's very simply leencae@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Ms. Abby Brummett. I have not got that right yet. Brummett.
Hello, I'm Abby Brummett, and my address is 1417 Winter Lock and Drive, Sanford. I am the media specialist at WB Wicker. And some of you have already been to see us. I'm here to ask all of you to please come, and the ones who have been, please come back. I want to thank you very much. Dr. Bryan, I assume that the STEAM school was your idea originally, but it took the courage of this board to make that happen. It takes a lot of courage to step out and do something new, and the students in this community are going to benefit. As I said, I'm the media specialist. I am passionate about my library. Is Dr. Dawson Buck here? He knows I spent 30 hours this summer just choosing the books to go in that library because I want every child to walk in and say, "They have this." Children still love books. But I'm also passionate about curriculum, and so I brought some little props to show you to entice you to come see this. I have been using the VR glasses this week with all of our 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders. I'm trying to get every single 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade child at WB Wicker to walk on the moon, to look, you can go through your lungs and your heart, you can look inside of a volcano. Amazing. I brought a little robot. We are coding in elementary school. Dr. Dave came by and he was like, "Wait a minute. You know, we're doing these things in high school." And I said, "No, at WB Wicker, we're doing these things in elementary school." They are programming mice today. Dropped off in my room, an amazing Fusion 3 3D printer. And we're going to be doing amazing things. We're going to be teaching children hands-on activities, science activities, integrated activities, things that inspire them. And they are stopping me in the halls to say, "Are you coming in my room? When are you coming to me?" So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Antonio Peraza.
My name is Antonio Peraza. I live in 97 Manassas Drive, right here in Sanford. Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Bryan, Dr. Dawson Buck, Dr. Chapel, good evening to you all, members of the community present here tonight. I requested to be here tonight to address the board, to extend the gratitude from all the members of the brand-new family at Wicker. And this comes also from a teacher who has served Lee County students for 12 years, one of the last members of the VIF program, you know, from 12 years ago I started here. And during this whole process of, you know, moving to a new school, to a new building, to a new classroom, the thought that I always had in my head was, I cannot wait to see the kids' faces when they walk in this, you know, brand-new building. And I have to say, it was really worth the wait. I mean, that first week, which now seems a long time ago, that was only two weeks ago, but their faces, their gasps, their, "Look, look here, we have a dance studio, we have a brand-new school." It was worth the wait. I still now, I love to see their expressions. And that gratitude not only goes towards the board and the district for making every effort to make this school a reality, it also goes to every member of the maintenance team who for days came also to help in every way they could to all the staff members. Excuse me. I would like to also recognize and express my gratitude to the administration team at Wicker, led by Ms. Carlisle. They have addressed all the questions, all the needs from staff and students and parents in a very, very professional way. So, for every effort made by everyone involved in building this brand-new school, I say thank you. And go Tigers.
Thank you. Ms. Tina Maples.
I'm Tina Maples. I live at 2201 Brookwood Trail. I've seen several of your faces quite often, especially over the last couple of weeks. I am a 5th grade teacher at WB Wicker. This is my fifth year at Lee County Schools, very gladly at Lee County Schools, and I graduated from this high school right here. So, I have always wanted to go back and touch the community that I work in. My husband told me to speak from the heart, so if I get emotional, I'm a little sorry. But what you have done for the children in that community is more than you will ever know. I have 29 children in my classroom. I'm not worried about the class size. I'm worried about making sure that I can get to each and every one of them. You've given me plenty of tools. I have art, I have music, I have the freedom to do any activity I need to do to get them to learn. We dance to learn the water cycle. We do puzzles on the floor to learn math. We have the space, we have the storage for me to have these tools in front of me to use with my children. I've always been concerned that they might lose the arts, and the arts are sometimes the only way that you can connect to these children. And these children are so grateful. Of the 29 children that I have in my classroom, I'd like to tell you that I've had perfect attendance every day but two days since school started. These are 5th graders who want to come, they want to learn, and they want to be part of this community. And I just cannot thank all of you enough for building this and building our community. This is what's going to bring our community above other communities because we're not talking against each other, we're coming together as a community, whether it's the staff, the students, the school board, the police department, the sheriff's department, everybody is coming together for this school, and it should be looked at as the heart of our community. Go Tigers.
Ms. Kelly Ladati.
My name is Kelly Ladati. This is Carson Ladati. We both live at 1806 Crete Myrtle Drive. Superintendent Bryan, school board members, thank you for letting Carson and I share a message with you tonight. I want to read a text to you that I sent Wendy Carlisle, the principal of WB Wicker, after the first day of school. Today was a really hard morning. I left a very teary-eyed Carson with a roomful of people she did not know, she didn't know one. We left a tramway elementary school that was home and where everybody knew who she was. So I left WB Wicker that morning with tears streaming down my face. That afternoon, I picked up an exciting, smiling little girl who grew in wisdom today because she was brave and took a big step outside of her comfort zone, today my daughter taught me. So this text that I sent Wendy after the first day of school proves that the hardships that you felt in the process of having this school approved, the delays in construction, and the kinks that are still being worked out currently at the school are worth every one of your efforts. Our school board have given our community a new school to excel through a STEAM environment to help build strong citizens that will go out into our world and will make an impact. Carson and I want to extend thanks to each of you for reopening the doors of WB Wicker. And we are thrilled that our family is one of the pioneer families to walk the halls of a piece of Sanford's history. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, let us have the Lee County Schools' vision shared.
Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Thank you. And now to our Code of Ethics for school board members.
The board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the board must adhere to an accepted Code of Ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Boards of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the board. Avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board. Avoid the misuse of public funds. Avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts. And avoid making confidential information public. The board accepts the Code of Ethics established by the North Carolina School Board Association.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve our agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for September the 10th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor approving our agenda as presented, sign with C and I.
Aye.
Thank you. And I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our called board meeting on 8/12, our regular board meeting of 8/13, and our called board meeting on 9/3, 2019.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from our called meeting on 8/12, our regular meeting on 8/13, and our called meeting on 9/3.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor approval of the minutes, sign with C and I.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Minutes are approved. I have to admit, those public comments kind of took a little bit of wind out of my chairman's report, and I want to try to not repeat some of the same things they said, but I want to say thank you to our entire community for not only the opening of WB Wicker, but also our entire school system. As it stands today, all schools are back in, so our year-round, our early college and our regular schools are back in session. And when I say community, that includes COC for the backpack pals, that includes our maintenance staff, that includes our sheriff's department, our SROs, and everybody that has a hand in educating children in this county, whether it's big or small. It takes a village to raise a child. Kind of go along with that same thing as well. I'd like to extend my gratitude to the sheriff's office and emergency management and our senior staff for the hard decisions we have to make when weather comes. These are not decisions that we, the school system, take lightly, and I commend all those involved in those decisions and all the sleep they lose over those decisions. And many people don't realize, but they come in and work on those days that we're shut to make those decisions as well for the following day. So they risk their lives and their safety and away from their family for that. So I'd like to say thank you to all of them as well. You know, it's hard to pinpoint so much to be grateful for with our school system, with our community, and I'll leave those public comments at that, that they can speak for the rest of it. At this time, I will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo your comments. I think we've had a great opening to school, not only at WB Wicker Elementary School, but also across the district. And as so many people have already said this evening, it takes so many people to make that work, and we're so grateful for all of our staff, teacher staff, administrators who make that work every day. And it's a big, complex puzzle that works because the people make it work and do such a great job. I also like to thank all of our community members who make such an extra effort to support our schools, and we're very appreciative of everything they do to support us. It's always amazing and always exciting, I believe. I've been in this business a long time, and the first day of school is still as exciting as the very first day of school I ever experienced. And it's a renewal and a rebirth and something we celebrate every year, and it's important for our students and for our community. Last week, performance grades and accountability data were released by the state of North Carolina, and our schools, nine of 13 schools met or exceeded growth. Five of our nine schools who met or exceeded growth actually exceeded growth. We had 1A, 1B, nine Cs, two Ds, and the schools that will be working on to make sure that we can improve those grades, not just the two Ds, but also the grades all the way across to continue to improve our school district, will be meeting with staffs at each school and teachers and principals to make our schools even better. Dr. Dawson Buck has already started digging into the data and working with folks at various schools and throughout the district. We're very excited about moving forward and want to continue the progress our district has made. With that, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Bryan. Moving on to our committee reports, curriculum and instruction, Dr. Stephen Cobal.
Mr. Chairman, we did not meet in August. We're looking forward to a meeting on the 25th of September at Southern Lee High School at 3:30. We're kind of excited about this one. We have Dr. Dawson Buck involved with us here, and we're looking forward to our first CNI meeting with him.
Thank you, Dr. Cobal, for facilities and technology.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I start the committee report, I'd like to bring up some names that we don't hear mentioned very much, particularly in what we've heard from our teachers, is the people who really did the school, Jimmy Height of Height and Associates of Greenville. This whole thing is a product of his imagination. The first time we walked in the old, not so old, it's new now auditorium.
Historic.
Well, yes. That's a better word. Thank you, Tina.
That's a teacher for you.
You know, I thought, you know, this building needs to go away, and what he saw was something beautiful. And if you want to see what he saw, all you have to do is go in there and look at it now. And Andy Miles, who lives over in Silver City, is a general contractor, did a magnificent job about two weeks before school opened. I heard this conversation, and it really happened. The architect and the contractor were told, "There is no Plan B. This school's going to open." And somebody said, "Well, we need a miracle." And it opened on time, and it's beautiful, and I can't tell you how pleased I am to hear our teachers respond accordingly. So just some names that don't get mentioned very often. Back to our committee report. The first item on our agenda on August the 27th was actually a gift. The Sanford Sting, which is a local youth football program, offered to donate a 12-by-28 storage shed to Lee County Football Practice Field in the amount of $5,000. And Mr. Ross will prepare a letter to the Sanford Sting allowing them storage space and a storage shed, and actually, we will share that with them. That is on your consent agenda. Mr. Love reviewed our elevator contract. I didn't even know we had six elevators in the county, but we do. And he is reviewing that contract that we need to, in past, have reviewed every five years, and he will get back to the committee on that. We also considered a propane gas lease. We have propane gas in the bus garage, Broadway School, Deep River School, Greenwood School, the English as a Second Language House, and the maintenance building. And it was consensus of the committee to award the propane bid to Hunter Oil and Propane Company in the amount of $1,590 per gallon for three years. That is also on your consent agenda. We also approved repairing the roof at Greenwood School, and interestingly enough, this is damage that was done from Florence. We've already had another hurricane, but we approved a project in the amount of $127,264.80 to continue the repair of that roof. And finally, we approved a plumbing project at Lee County High School in the maintenance room. And actually, we're taking out cast iron. Now, this was not repaired during the renovation of Lee County High School, so this cast iron has been there for a long time, and it was consensus of the committee to award the Lee County High School cast iron project to Hair Plumbing in the amount of $10,165. That also is on your consent agenda. And our next meeting is Tuesday, September 24th, 2019, at 4:00 p.m.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Finance?
Well, finance met the same day, August 27th. Dr. Bryan updated the committee that once the final numbers were committed on the Wicker project, that a formal request for contingency appropriation and sales and use tax fund appropriation would need to be made to the Lee County Commissioners. That is not yet due, so we will consider that when the time is right. And we also had a request from the AIG Department requesting approval of the Lee County School Board to enter into a contract with Gerber Tours to plan and coordinate the optional Washington DC trip offered in June as part of the AIG Kaleidoscope Camp. The camp is for rising AIG 6th graders, takes place from June 11th to the 23rd, and the Washington trip takes, year's cost is $693 per student. The students' family pay for the trip, or there are some scholarships for children who cannot afford that, and the contract is based on a projected number of 91 trip participants. That will appear also on your consent agenda. You will also find the board expenses as an FYI item, and as usual, the July 2019 financial statement for Lee County Schools is included as an FYI. And our next meeting is September 24th, 5:00, at Heinz Building.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank the teachers that came out from WB Wicker. Tina almost made me cry. My art teacher changed my life forever. That's why I love serving on this board and with the public schools. I cannot begin to tell you how many weeks went by with feeding the kids and watching them. When you go down the road and you see a construction site, you'd see people standing out in the road, just standing there, and you're thinking they're not even working. But every time I went by that school, they were working. For the things that you teachers are doing, it's amazing, and the students absolutely love it, and you have Sanford and Lee County's greatest treasures in your care, and I sincerely, sincerely appreciate everything that you do. The policy committee did not meet this month. Our next meeting is scheduled for September the 19th at 5:00 p.m. on the second-floor conference room in the Heinz Building, and you're all welcome to join us. Thank you.
Thank you all. Moving along to our approval of our consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? At this time, one thing I'd like to add is that that Greenwood roof bid is being paid for by FEMA funds.
Correct. Back to hurricane damage.
Back from hurricane damage. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, sign with C and I.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Approval of the consent agenda has occurred. Moving along to our new business, to our CCIP grant. At this time, I invite Dr. Carol Chapel and Ms. Angela Mills to the podium.
Good evening. I don't know if this is on.
Rob, can you hear her? Is she good?
Let me get a little closer.
There you go.
Okay. I bring before you tonight our CCIP grant. This is our Lee County Comprehensive Continuous Improvement Grant. This is our state grant, and it has to do with all the federal programs. Federal programs originate in Washington, and then they come down to our departments, our state departments, and then out to the school districts. This includes Title I- For the things that your teachers are doing, it's amazing, and the students absolutely love it. And you have Sanford and Lee County's greatest treasures in your care, and I sincerely, sincerely appreciate everything that you do. The policy committee did not meet this month. Our next meeting is scheduled for September the 19th at 5:00 PM on the second floor conference room in the Heinz Building, and you're all welcome to join us. Thank you.
Thank you all. Moving along to our approval of our consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? At this time, the only thing I'd like to add is that that Greenwood roof bid is being paid for by FEMA funds.
Correct. Back, back to hurricane damage.
Back from hurricane damage. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, Signmasa and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Light sign. Approval of the consent agenda has occurred. Moving along to our new business, to our CCIP grant. At this time, I invite Dr. Carol Chapel and Ms. Angela Mills to the podium.
Good evening. I don't know if this is on.
Rob, can, is it, can you hear her? Is she good?
Let me get a little closer.
There we go.
Feel it?
There you go.
Okay. Bring before you tonight our CCIP grant. This is our Lee County Comprehensive Continuous Improvement Grant. This is our state grant, and it has to do with all the federal programs. Federal programs originate in Washington, and then they come down to our departments, our state departments, and then out to the school districts. This includes Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, the Migrant Education Plan, and the Rural Low Income School Plan. So there's, it, it seems like it grows every year to include more federal grants. In Lee County, we, with Title I is the largest, and that serves our eight elementary schools. We choose to serve just elementary to get the children off with a good start and a strong foundation, particularly in reading and math. About half the school systems in North Carolina serve just elementary. About half of them serve elementary and middle schools. There's only one district that, that serves high schools with Title I money. This money's used for additional teachers, literacy teachers, additional assistants, consultants, tutors. We have an LPN that will be paid out for out of this money this year at one of the schools, and book supplies, computers, computer programs, just about any, professional development, most anything you can think of, but it's all things that are supplemental, that the schools would not have otherwise. Let Angel talk to you a little about, bit about Title III because that concerns the ESL population.
Thank you, Dr. Chapel. Just, just a little bit. Title III is our supplemental funding that we use for serving English learners in Lee County. The majority of our money for Title III goes to support our ESL lead teacher in secondary schools, who goes out and helps content teachers and ESL teachers serve English learners better and learn the strategies that they need to be able to work with people who might have a language barrier and, to English in the classroom and help them achieve academically on the same content standards that everyone else has to achieve on. We also use that money to support our tutors that we have placed in the schools to help with students who are in challenging courses, who also are working with two languages as they are going through school. Another thing that we use our money for this year is a parent assistant. And that parent assistant helps our English learners and their families adjust to life here in the United States as well as breaking down language barriers with schools and teachers so that they can communicate better with one another and build that community foundation. Can I go on with the others? So just go ahead and do it. We also have immigrant funding that we apply for each year. It's not a lot. You get something called a Significant Increase Fund. So if you have a significant number of immigrants that come over the number that you had in previous years, you get a little money to support those students. And we have a part-time immigrant success assistant that works with students and families. We have been experiencing some growth in that area. Last year, we had about 160 immigrant students that were from all different countries across the world. And now we have 264 because we've received more students at the beginning of the school year, and we're expecting more. So we're really excited about that. We also have started up the migrant program again, which is something we haven't had in our county for about 10 years. And the migrant program is different because the migrant program is about families who go and seek work in agricultural areas, farms, products that, like, let's say you're doing orchards, hog processing, things like this. And the, the population is very transient, which has a tendency to have an effect on the student's ability to receive a consistent education. So there's funding available to support those students as they try to negotiate living a lifestyle that's a little bit more transient than most and trying to achieve academically in school. And we recently received enough students to apply for that grant again. We had about 50 last year, and we're knocking on 100's door this year. So the funding that we've applied for, for that goes to pay for a migrant recruiter, who is the person who goes out and makes sure that we find the students because they are transient. And pretty much this year, that's the limit to that fund. So we're looking forward to the work that we get to do with the money that hopefully will be provided to us.
Well, I had a question in reference to those numbers, the immigration. You were talking about that. The first number was 160, and so in one year, we've got to 264. It's an increase of 104?
Yes.
In this one year? Okay. And the last, I just wanted to clarify.
Those are just ballpark numbers.
Just, oh, okay, gotcha.
Because the number continues to fluctuate and grow.
And the migrant recruiter, does she also work in conjunction with the social services of Lee County?
Yes, so a migrant recruiter, and she, she, you know, she's just starting. But a migrant recruiter's job is to connect people that are in, that are, families that are migrant to services. So it's not just about serving academically, but also serving the whole child and the needs of that family. So if there are things that they're struggling with finding consistent food, if they have issues with housing, if things of that nature, she puts those families in contact with community agencies that can help them. So it's about keeping those folks connected to the community as much as you can, even though they're often moving around to find work.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion before I call for a motion to approve? Seeing none? I will entertain a motion to approve that Lee County Board of Education approve the 2019-2020 Lee County Comprehensive Continuous Improvement Plan grant.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the Comprehensive Continuous Improvement Plan grant for 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the CCCIP grant? Signmasa and I?
Aye.
Those, those opposed? Light sign? Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Just talking about Wicker tonight, I just wanted to say that I taught at Wicker for seven years.
She taught me at Wicker.
Angel's one of my former students there, and I'm very proud of her.
Thank you for what you two do both for, for all of Lee County. All right. Moving on to our resolution for the realignment of Kelly Drive. Board members, you will find this resolution in your agenda. I will, at this time, do my best to read every word of it for us. Resolution requesting prioritization of transportation funding for the realignment of Kelly Drive. Whereas, the realignment of Kelly Drive to bypass Central County Community College consistently ranks as the highest transportation project priority amongst local county officials. And whereas, Lee County is a member of the Triangle Area Rural Planning Organization, known as TARPo, that is responsible for developing transportation products list for priority consideration to be evaluated by the North Carolina Department of Transportation, NCDOT. And whereas, the Lee County Board of Education is supporting local efforts by TARPo that prioritize the realignment of Kelly Drive in their list of road improvement recommendations to the NCDOT. Whereas, the Kelly Drive, which bisects the CCCC campus, is primary and frequently used roadway connection between U, the 421 bypass, Hornet Boulevard, and Highway 121 and 87 through the city of Sanford. And whereas, in 2019, excuse me, in 2018, the completion of new facilities and expansion of programs offered to CCCC has significantly increased traffic on and through the campus, which increased safety risks to the growing pedestrian traffic to students frequently cross Kelly Drive to access classrooms and parking. And whereas, CCCC plans additional faculty expansion to the large animal vet tech facility construction starting later in 2019, and proposed projects for a new library and the early college classrooms that were further aspirated growing safety concerns related to increased vehicular and pedestrian traffic on and through campus. And whereas, the design and development plan for the approved and prospective campus expansion projects may include funding for the support of Kelly Drive realignment project. And whereas, the board strongly believes the realignment of Kelly Drive to bypass the CCCC campus is essential to provide safety of CCCC, the early college students, and faculty, as well as the safety and drivers of Lee County that use Kelly Drive. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Lee County Board of Education requests that the NCDOT allocate funding as soon as possible to support the realignment of Kelly Drive in Lee County, adopted on this day of September 10th, 2019. In a nutshell, as our county grows, so does our community college, which is currently ranked number one in the state of North Carolina. Little side note there. But it, as it grows, we're building buildings across the street of the main campus, and students and faculty and staff, including myself, since my office is on that side of the road actually, have to cross every day back and forth. The town of Broadway, city of Sanford, and the county has also passed this resolution. For us, while I may seem, some may wonder why we have taken this up, but our early, early college students cross that road just as much as anybody else. And I want to make sure that we have their safety top of our priority list as I know it is. So that is the reason I bring this resolution to you, is for the safety of our early, early college students in the current, now, or in the future if the new building is built across the road. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? Seeing none, I will, once again, say thank you once this passes, but I will call for a motion for, to pass this resolution.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we pass a resolution requesting the prioritization of transportation funding for the realignment of Kelly Drive.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Signmasa and I?
Aye.
Light, those opposed? Light sign? Thank you. Again, this is for the safety of our current students and future students, and I support, as this board does, realigning Kelly Drive for that very reason. Seeing nothing else, before our new business, I will entertain a motion for closed session.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the following purposes. To discuss information that is privileged, confidential, or not a public record under NCGS Section 143-318.11A1. To consult with the attorney retained by the Lee County Board of Education in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and said Board of Education under NCGS Section 143-318.11A3.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of assuming closed session, Signmasa and I? Motion passes, we stand in closed session. At this time, I call the Lee County Board of Education back into open session. And before we move forward, I'd like to point out one thing. I forgot to mention a while ago, and I was just informing this yesterday, that the construction has been approved for the realignment of Kelly Drive. This is already on our agenda, but construction actually starts March of 2022. So that was, I had it written in my notes. At this time, I will call for any motions concerning personnel for our new business.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the one-year contracts as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving our one-year contracts as presented, Signmasa and I?
Aye.
All the opposed? Light sign? Our one-year contracts stand approved. Is there any other motions before personnel?
I make a motion that the Lee County Board of Education approve the HR report, excuse me, the human resources report as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Signmasa, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All the opposed? Light sign? Our personnel report as presented is approved. At this time, if there's no further business before the Lee County Board of Education, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Signmasa by saying aye? Thank you for coming tonight, we stand adjourned.